I'd like to call the meeting of the Naragansett Regional School District School Committee to order and we will start with the first question.
Congratulations.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded by MRSB for conjunction with Templeton Community TV or TCTV and provided to Templeton and Philistine Cable Access TV. I would like to tell you that you have a YouTube channel and that I'm posted on today's website, so go ahead and follow Templeton Community TV if you'd like to be notified when these videos go up. We have a lot of minutes to approve tonight, so the first one, I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes of September 18th, 2019.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Do I have any questions or comments, corrections, or anything to add to those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries unanimously. The second set of minutes is for October 1st, 2019. This would be the Finance Subcommittee meeting, so I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes of October 1st, 2019, Finance Subcommittee meeting.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second.
Let's take care of it, Dan.
Do I have any questions, comments, corrections, or anything on these minutes to discuss? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, passes unanimously. I would then entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes of our regular school committee meeting of October 1st, 2019.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Are there any questions, comments, or corrections that need to be made to these minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, and the motion carries unanimously. I would now entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes of October 9th, 2019.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Any questions, comments, or corrections?
There were two corrections, I gave them to Susan, one was, they're just two simple typos that I caught, so I just wrote them down. I couldn't get them when I looked at them.
Okay, so I would entertain an amended motion to accept the minutes as written with the correction to the two typos as Mrs. Kojal has identified?
Did she send them?
She gave them to Susan.
I gave them to Susan just now. No, I just did.
Oh, okay.
So I would entertain that as amended motion if that's the case.
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Seeing none, this would be a motion to approve the minutes with the correction to the two typos, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, and that motion carries unanimously. And Mrs. Varney, I know you have those corrections, perfect. The next motion I would entertain would be for the minutes of October 22nd, 2019, and this was the meeting where we hosted the two select boards so that a moderator could be chosen for the district-wide town meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Any questions, comments, or corrections to that, to those minutes?
I think I made the motion for the 16, I mean 19, whatever it was, 643?
Which minute, so this is the, that's probably the next one.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so this was the moderator selection?
Oh, sorry, Sarah.
Yeah, that's okay, that'll be the next one, so you just... Anyone else have anything on the moderator selection minutes? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, so that one carries unanimously. The next minutes are for the meeting of October 22nd, 2019. I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
If I have a second?
Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Questions, comments, corrections?
I believe I made the motion for the 196.
Okay, so in the minutes, and I apologize if I didn't power up my PC, there is a typo that needs to be corrected that Mr. Mason...
And I, Laurie, seconded it.
Okay, and what is, what is on there for?
It says Laurie doing it.
No, it says Mrs. Kojal made a motion to certify 19643 and Mr. Mason seconded. Is that where you're talking?
Yep.
So maybe I seconded it.
So it was, okay, so we need to correct two motions and that would have been Mr. Mason and the second, which would have been Mrs. Kojal?
No, Mattson.
Maybe Mrs. Mattson, okay. Are there any other issues with the minutes? Everything else look good? So I would take an amended motion to approve the minutes of October 22nd, making the correction to that section which would indicate that Mr. Mason motioned and Mrs. Mattson seconded.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second on that. Any other questions, comments, corrections? Seeing none, all in favor of the amended motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, that carries unanimously. So Mrs. Varney, you have, that's perfect. Next, I would take a motion to approve the meeting minutes of October 28th, 2019. This was the tri-board meeting that we hosted in the library. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a couple seconds. Any questions, comments, or corrections on those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, motion carries unanimously. And lastly, I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes of October 29th.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Any questions, comments, or corrections that anyone sees would need to be made on the minutes from the 29th? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, and the motion carries unanimously. So thank you, everyone, for reading through all of those, and thank you, Mrs. Varney, for doing such a wonderful job documenting this, and a lot of information. I have to say, the quality of the minutes was spot-on, so thank you, thank you. Bills and payroll are next. I would entertain a motion to accept the bills and payrolls warrants as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, and that motion carries unanimously. Okay. Next up, we have appearances. First off, our student representatives.
So term one has finally come to an end.
Last Friday, our football team, Varsity, lost their first playoff game, 34 to 30, versus St. Bernard's. But they still have another game next Friday to fight for the loser bracket, so I'll be home at 6:00 PM on Friday. The JV team also has a game next Monday at Auburn.
The field hockey team lost their second round of districts against Oakmont, but they ended their season as undefeated league champs, so had a fantastic season.
The cross-country team had a fantastic season with a significant amount of team moving on in district, I can't read this. The cross-country team had a fantastic season with a significant amount of the team moving into district-level meets, and one senior, Hunter Marion, was invited to represent our midwatch E-league at the State Cross-Country Summit. He also received the Athletic Leader in Community Award.
Halloween was well-celebrated throughout the district with events spanning from the elementary schools all the way to the senior class, the Horables Parade.
And a trick-or-treat so kids can eat event, which was a food drive-raising event, was run by the NRHS Theater Company, and that went very successfully.
Warrior Fest and Homecoming went extremely well. The Warrior Walk for the elementary kids was adorable and well-attended. The football team won the homecoming game, and the homecoming dance for the high school was a super-good, super-good success with a lot of attendance.
The band performed for the fifth graders to garner some interest in them to join the band and to learn about the different instruments.
Something that we noticed is that the middle school classes are doing archery, which is pretty cool in the gym.
So don't use the second door, you might get shot. Local firefighters came into the elementary schools to teach about fire safety.
Again, absolutely adorable. The Gansett Marching Band competed in the final round of the MICA competition, they received three stars, so congratulations to all of them.
The high school drama club is running auditions for their festival play this week, and musical auditions are coming up next month.
Tap dances are available, are running in the district for all of our interested students.
And the Powerpuff football game for the senior and junior girls is Monday, November 25th at 6:00 PM.
Also, tomorrow at 6 o'clock is the Class of 2020 Turkey Raffle at the Bonn Legion.
If you want to make a donation, talk to us, please. Please make a donation.
Anything else?
I'm surprised you guys didn't advocate for a two-hour delay or something today because it was like...
It was very cold.
Yeah, low numbers.
It was cold. Dr. Kazivan, I just want to let you know, my car doesn't have heat, so...
Good. And what I would say, that there were, there were quite a few students who advocated for a half-day, as they do on Twitter and other modes. I choose to support them. And they all made it in, and they were smiling when I saw them. They were cold, and that's good.
As long as you got that boiler going, we'll be all set.
Next up, we have asked our two PTOs to come in and talk to us. It's super-important to the school committee that we have some FaceTime with our PTOs. You do so many wonderful things for our kids, and we often don't hear about them, or we hear about them after the fact, so we want to meet you, hear about all the wonderful things that you're doing, and also give you some, a chance to let the community know about your group. So I will invite down, you can do rock, paper, scissors, who comes first? I know we have our two groups, from Templeton Elementary and from Philistine Memorial, so...
Alphabetically.
Alphabetically. So, yes, if you wouldn't mind?
Just, just...
Yeah, you know what? As long as Ann says that she can hear through the microphone, we'll be good.
Can you hear me?
So maybe if you just introduce yourself first, and then we'll go from there.
My name's Kate McGinnis, I'm the PTO president. This is Jessica Smith, she's a first-grade teacher as well as our secretary. And then this is Heather, I can't pronounce her name.
Namzora.
She is a big part of our PTO, she was one-time secretary.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we are there 100% to support the students and the teachers in the elementary school. We do fundraising. We support the students by providing snacks for kids that don't come to school with snacks. We also supplement the teachers' supplies of hand sanitizer, wipes, tissues. We also have approved to pay $1,500 per grade for field trips this year, which is a big change for us because now we have K, we have pre-K through five, so that is a good amount of money we're paying there, too. We do lots of events throughout the year. So we did do the open house, which we did scat and... I had a nice cream jar come in, give away ice cream for the students and families that came in. We already brought in the Richmond program this year, we brought in the Birds of Pride Fratile demonstration that was during school hours. We do lots of community events. We already had a movie night in October, we did Popcorn and Great Pumpkin and Spookly, and that was free of charge for anybody that came. We have an event coming up in November, November 24th, we're doing Frozen 2 at the Gardner Cinemas. It's a private showing just for our elementary, well, for anyway, for the only truthfully that wants to come, it's $6 per person to join us. And we also have our annual breakfast with Santa coming up on December 7th at 9:00 AM?
9:00.
9:00. And, yeah, we do, and we also help the teachers. The teachers have requests for something that they need for their classroom to, to bring learning materials or even incentives. They submit a request to us, and we can approve it, and most times they're, they're asking for it, so we're 100% supportive of kids and teachers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions for the Templeton side of the meeting?
I'm still coming. I actually intern in the kindergarten classroom, and I can see the good that you guys bring in, so just thank you very much from the kids, they appreciate it.
I would just say, I encourage you, if you need to reach out to us at any point, to please do so, if you have activities that you want spoken about, to, you know, reach out to us, we're happy to talk about them here and get your word out. If anyone wants to contact your group, if they're interested in joining, helping in any way, how would they do that?
So we do have a Facebook page, it's the Templeton Elementary PTO, or you can actually email us at email t e s p t o at gmail dot com.
Great.
And obviously, contact the school, they know how to get in touch with us.
Anything else?
There's a pancake breakfast coming.
Yes, with Santa.
With Santa.
Pancake breakfast. And they, they need volunteers, they need parents, they need, they need people.
We need, we need our children shopping at our home.
That's right. And so we talked about that last night at the meeting, and so, you know, that's important. If you've got a couple hours to spare, or whatever the case may be, how about this great activity? Because three and four people cannot do it, cannot possibly run it. It's, every time I've been, it's been well over 100 kids, I don't care what configuration we've been in, so please make an effort to come out and reach out and to see what you can do in terms of help.
So that would be December 7th, this event, and you said at 9:00 it starts?
It starts at 9:00. We believe there is early 7:00, compared to food and getting ready.
So you're looking for all sorts of volunteers, so anyone out in the community?
We will never turn anybody away.
Okay, so Mom, I know the rain here. If, I would suggest maybe reaching out to our honor society kids that are looking for volunteer hours.
Yes.
We did that last night, I texted a few, so, but thank you, but there's also the need for, for adults as well, just the thank you, because that's well timed.
I have a question about parents and if they need to be corried, and if that's the case, how would they do it efficiently?
So any new member that's going to, just come by the school, just come by the central office card, and we'll, we'll be more than happy.
So if they're volunteering, they should do that prior to?
Absolutely. By a couple days, yes.
Is it any volunteer, just because I know that corrie is...
Number 18?
Yeah, so I guess if you'd like to volunteer, I would contact school, find out if it's necessary based on whatever the event would be, but we're happy to facilitate that.
18 and above.
18 and above, so 18 and above, perfect.
And I think any interaction with kids, you need a corrie.
A corrie is for the, for the organization, technically speaking, just technically speaking, it would be on the PTOs to make sure that they are corried. We, of course, would corrie anyone who wanted to, well, be a volunteer. So that was, we corrie for us, but we would absolutely do that for the PTOs without a problem.
Thank you. Great, thank you. Phillipsen?
My name's Kathy Olson, and I'm the Naragansett Craft Fair's coordinator, and I've been in that for 10 years now, and am not as hard as fundraiser for the Phillipsen PTO slash Phillipsen supporter, youth supporter organization.
I'm Jennifer Wood, and I'm the treasurer for both. So I'm going to take a minute just to kind of catch everybody up, just in case you weren't aware. As previously discussed, we are in the middle of transitioning from the Phillipsen parent-teacher group to Phillipsen Youth Support, and we are not official yet. We have legal counsel working on that, and hopefully by the beginning of January, we'll actually have all the documentation to bring and present, that's for legal. But what Phillipsen Youth Support is, is basically exactly what we are, except for it's more inclusive. It takes it out of the parent-teacher group of Phillipsen, and it opens it up to anybody that would like to participate and be part of the group, and all proceeds goes to the youth of Phillipsen, not stopping at fourth or fifth grade, but extending all the way up through high school. So it just brings it more inclusively and more of a community group as opposed to just single. When, the option to go to this is to keep the current fundraiser, as Kathy said, the craft fair has been going on for 41 years, and with the uncertainty of what was going to be happening, we're looking to preserve, because once you stop something like that, it's very hard to, hard to be engaged in. So we came up with this idea, the model stays the same, it's all for the kids in the community, it's all to support the kids of Phillipsen, and bringing programs, we're just going to run it slightly different, where we're not actually running the event, but we're the financial piece of it to run it.
So how did the craft fair, that was this past Saturday?
It was very well attended. We filled the whole school with vendors, we had 483 vendors here, and we were very satisfied, customers and vendors, both, so it was one of our best fundraisers.
Great, congratulations.
And we're already now filled full for next year.
Awesome. So if someone wanted to, because I've had, actually seen this on Facebook, people looking to have a contact about the craft fair, because people think ahead.
Naragansett Craft Fair actually has its own website, it's naragansettcraftfair.com, and all our information, contact information is right there. We will also be putting out a Facebook page for the Phillipsen Youth Supporters that will also have all the forums and all the information on it, so that if you wanted to become part of the group, if you wanted to apply for money, such as scholarships to Ferry Beach or to the Cub Scouts or Boy Scouts or Girl Scouts or whatever, there, it will be right out and open for people to apply. And it will have all our bios, and that's what we're hoping to bring and present to you, once we're official, so that you can actually know who qualifies, how it happens, and we're just waiting for the go-hens to enter each other.
Wonderful. Any questions or comments? It sounds like you've really thought through reconfiguring the focus of the group, which sounds wonderful, and it's nice to see that you've taken the tradition and ensuring that that stays on that craft fair. I've heard from many vendors who have said it's one of their favorites to do because, one, it's indoor, and, and it is well-attended, I mean, the whole community comes out, so good luck as you work through the final stages of getting everything. We look forward to hearing back from you. We would love to engage all of you to come back every few months, whatever timeframe we can get to work, and we'll work through Dr. Kazivan on making that happen so that you can update us on what's going on and give a plug when you need some help, and, and you know, we're very committed to making sure you're successful because it helps this district in so many ways, because it is all about the kids. So we thank you so much for all of your efforts and the focus that you're putting back, and everything you do goes right back to those kids, so we thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I'm not sure, would it be okay if the nice folks who've come out here tonight depart?
If they would like to depart, yes.
So they don't have to awkwardly go crawl out?
Yes, thank you, that would be, yes. So I'm assuming you probably have children at home who might want you to be there?
I'll throw that over to them.
I'm sure mine's already screaming, where's dinner?
Yeah, yeah.
Except for our husbands are doing it in our kitchen.
We'd like for Ms. Smith to stay.
Thank you, ladies.
No, no, she's, I'm just messing with you, I'm messing with you.
Thank you for your time, thank you very much.
Thank you. On our agenda this evening, we had initially anticipated that our athletic director was going to present, that'll be moved to December, since both PTOs were able to come tonight, we wanted to move that, so that'll happen in December. Public input, do we have anyone from the public that would like to speak this evening? Seeing none, we'll jump ahead to the NDEA, Mrs. Parker is here.
Hi, this is Dr. Parker, and we're starting the end of the first quarter of the middle of the school, and every time it's coming out the middle school and entry, and busy, busy, and it's busy, but seems like everyone knows how it is.
All right, thank you. Ongoing business, the business manager's report. I know Mrs. Geister had prepared some reports, I put some because I don't want to lose screen. They were out there for everybody to review. Was there any, I'll start with Mrs. Geister, was there anything on here that we should pay particular attention to that we may not have noticed ourselves?
There, there's really nothing. I included this month, the 112 cash flow, just so you can see where we are, which, that's going fine. We have a budget freeze, so there's not a lot of spending going on, just kind of waiting to see how we make out in this process.
Right, grants, I'm going to channel my Mrs. Tripolo, who's going to ask in her behalf. Everything seem on track with grants?
Yeah.
You know, the money sometimes don't match.
Like, all they've been applied, everything has been applied for, the money's coming in, now it's just, you spend it and you seek reimbursement, so they're always going to show in the red until July.
Okay. Anyone have any questions or comments about the financial differences, Mrs. Geister? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the next piece of ongoing...
What budget letter were we up to? Was it H?
I think double Z.
Was it J?
Lost your accent.
I think maybe we should do another one, just to...
Just for the fun of it?
Yeah, but you did so many, I think, too.
I mean, until they get into the double letters, you know.
Yeah.
Our next item on the agenda is the FY '20 budget. I'm going to throw this out to the floor. We did have a finance meeting before this, so we did have some discussions on FY '20 budget. I'll look to maybe some member of the committee who might want to kick off the discussion, and then we'll go from there.
May I just mention that was a posted public finance meeting that we had? Well, I'll start. We went to the Cape, and we went to a conference for school committee, and we went to a seminar. Margaret presented, Christine Lynch was there, Mary Jane Handy, who sets the tax rates, and Jay Sullivan, he's the assistant commissioner, right?
Yes.
And it was a wonderful program, but afterward, we had a bit of conversation with a couple of people that were on the board, and it was implied that we needed to start working together as a school committee and our communities. And it was said that by one person, that she didn't believe that the people on the state level from DESI would go against the town's wishes.
Can I? So?
I'd say, I just want to re, I had a conversation with Christine Lynch, and got the same feeling from, from that. Lot of discussion about the number that was given, the fact that the regulation says that that's not what they, you know, they can choose to give us any number come December 1, that we started off with a number that if we normalized for the debt and the budget, we actually, they gave us more money. So there's a lot of, of discussion up at DESI about what the number should be based upon, where we should have started versus what they looked at. I know I didn't walk away with...
Optimistic.
Yeah, very optimistic feeling they were going to be the cheerleader for the school committee's number.
No, and also, if an overseer is sent in, we have to pay that overseer, and could average $80,000, whatever.
So in the meantime, we've also received some communication from, I think it was signed by Jay Sullivan on behalf of the commissioner, that the next steps taking us forth through the, the process through DESI is we need to provide information by Friday to the Department of Ed. They've asked for information not just from the school committee, and obviously, Dr. Kazivan, and Mrs. Geister, but also from the towns. So they solicit information from all interested parties, so they have, I believe, already received some information from the towns, I know we're working on things. We've also been once again reminded of the regulations and how that works, the fact that whatever the 112 number we were given is not necessarily what we're going to end up with. So there's been a lot of communications about process, as Mrs. Kojal mentioned, highlighting also if a receiver is sent in, that's on our dime, so on top of perhaps maybe a reduced budget, we're also now paying for it.
So on top of perhaps maybe a reduced budget, we're also now paying for someone to oversee if that's the choice they make to do. So lots of communications are happening back and forth at this point.
And he also said that the town made adjustments, yet we haven't. And he, why? And it's because we believed in our budget. But he wanted to know why we didn't make any.
Well, we did, we did make adjustments.
Did you tell them that we did?
We did.
Yeah.
But we haven't changed from the 1907. Yes, so that was the question, yeah. The real situation in, Mr. Mason said it in October in the minutes, that he didn't believe the state wanted to usurp anything that the town would do. And the other part is that they don't want to come in, they're not a problem solver. We are here to do our own budget and to set our own and to come up with it, so that, we need to fix it. We said that along the way as well, that it is ours to do, and it's not somebody who'll come in, it's just the way it is. And I think, I think it's time to discuss some of these things, as we've done along the way, but again.
So as a segue, if someone on the committee is so inclined, I would entertain a motion to recertify our number, either at the $19,500,000 that has already been approved by the town, or any other number there such, if someone is so inclined to make a motion.
I will make that motion for 19.5 again.
So I have, I have a motion on the floor to certify the Naragansett Regional School District School Committee budget at $19,500,000 for the FY '20 budget, and I also have a second by Mrs. Mattson.
Thank you, Laura.
Okay. Discussions on, any further discussion on that number? Mr. Mason?
Can we have Dr. Kazivan give a list of recommended cuts and stuff that we think we'll have to do going forward?
Okay, so the question was Dr. Kazivan, if you'd be so kind to let us know what your recommendations and your cuts would be with a $19,500,000 budget.
So, a little bit of a back, sorry, after our last district-wide meetings, over the next two days after that, I met with folks who could be impacted. Quite frankly, I said to them that it was my feeling that, I did not feel at that time that the state would come in and rescue us, so to speak, or into, to approve or to set the 1907. So what I, what we did is, I met with all the affected folks and said that regardless of what happened, that the, because, you know, conceivably, the state could come in tomorrow and, you know, or whenever, and just come in and just do what they want to do or have to do. So what I proposed, that regardless, we're about to stay true to this, that there'll be a Thanksgiving at the break, Thanksgiving, that's when the transition will take place. Because if, the things we're about to go through, we have kids who are affected, right? We have students, we have to notify parents, we have to do things beyond just letting our staff know, and I had a conversation with those staff members. So I want to throw that out there, and, you know, that we've had these conversations. But the actual positions and cuts going down is a kindergarten teacher, kindergarten para, nurse position, a secretary position, a high school math teacher, just for transparency, we had, we had, we've had several resignations since the district-wide meeting. This represented an opportunity, so at the high school level, there were five math teachers. There are now, or very well, it's very soon, the four math teachers, and those students were rolled into the existing four teachers, so that represented an opportunity, quite frankly. Sorry, I lost my mind. Okay, high school, this Fed secretary position has been cut. There are various, I will read through them, but, fortunately, nursery to grant of $2,500, but library supplies, nursing software, middle school intermurals, no winter or spring, maintenance supply line cut, middle school, high school electricity, electricity department, technology lease, miscellaneous supply accounts, athletic director stipend being moved to the revolving, which is the athletic revolving account. The athletic coaches, just so we're clear about that, these are positions that because of just dwindling numbers were not filled. So in other words, I'm trying to think of an example, but if there was a freshman coach where JV coach position, you don't have enough to fill it, those positions were just, were just reduced in that manner. Computer software and stabilization, money that was put into stabilization. The total reduction comes to $286,889, which, which levels out the existing budget to the 19.5, as stated.
And where's the kindergarten position? That's in TC, right?
I'm sorry.
The kindergarten position is in Templeton?
Yes, so those students would be, would be, those students then would be distributed to the existing Templeton kindergarten teachers.
Just to clarify, the nurse position is?
So the nurse position, there is, what will be in actuality, is that there will be a cut to the Templeton Elementary nursing staff, okay? Because there are two there currently. And, but in reality, there is, we do not have a full-time or employed or NRSD nurse at the high school. So however it, however at all, through seniority, et cetera, et cetera, we will have a nurse in every building, one nurse in every building.
So they're shifting.
So they're shifting, right. I just want to make sure, though, that people don't hear that, oh, my gosh, there'll be no nurse at Templeton. It's not, there'll just be a nurse in every building, one nurse in every building.
Was, how much do we have in stabilization in that account?
It's like $51,000.
And, and our goal was to put $25,000 in there this year?
Yep.
Which we're, we're not doing now, we're taking that out.
Correct.
Right.
Okay. So this, do we normally put money in stabilization?
Nothing has been put in there since Dr. Henry was here, the first time.
And what do we use the stabilization for normally?
It's for anything that the school committee decides to involve.
Would be an emergency. Most likely an emergency expenditure, similar to a town's general stabilization fund.
Sure, towns, yeah.
And I'd just like to say, nobody likes this number, none of us do.
No.
We fought, we have fought, we've fought, we've fought. We've had three district meetings, every time they come back with 19.5. If the state comes in, it could be less than 19.5. At least with 19.5, we know where we are, we know what we have to do. And even at 19.5, next year, we're going to be at least 4%, looking for 4% more. So we're still going to be in the same trouble next year, but that's going to be another whole battle we have to fight. So I'm just putting that out there. Better the devil we know right now at 19.5 than we don't know on December 1st, is what I'm saying.
I kind of feel like we've just been beaten down quite a bit, and we're, we're at the end. I don't, there's, we've literally been told, you're not getting what you want, so.
And I would suggest this, it's one thing to be told and to go through the process, and if it was simply the process itself, okay. And I think that one could lean on the state, just to, in essence, point to them, and we wash our hands of this. I think, though, that the ramifications could then further, you know, negatively affect the budget. So no one, they're very tight-lipped about these things, obviously, but if they did, you know, put a receiver in place, if they did, when they take over the, you know, take financial oversight, and now we cannot have any contract over $25,000 until the next FY, there's a whole litany of things, that limits the work that we can do. And so I think it's, it's not so much for the state to come in to say, like, oh, we're afraid of the state. No, we're actually afraid of what other financial, what was the financial impact of the state coming in, which could be, could be worse. And I, and I can't think of a scenario that we're going to be able to wiggle out of if it, if it's worse. And that's, you know, that's, you know, there have been some battles that have been won by retreat, a famous person once said. And I don't really, I don't really see this as retreat, I see it more as being, being more prudent and working with the number that we know, rather than the number that we don't.
That's how I feel, thank you.
I mean, that has ramifications. We put this out here, we had support for what we were doing. Now that, if this number is accepted, and we have a certified budget, that puts us in a different place for planning 21. So, and we tried something, and now we know, and we will be talking a little bit later about how we move forward. But we can't move forward in the same manner we did. So knowing that we had plans, and those plans can't work out, now we have to redirect what we have. And we will, we will involve everybody and anybody, but it will have to happen, because if we start with this number, that's what it is.
Margaret? I have another question. So since they gave us the, the number they did at the beginning, the 1907, for the first six months, and now we're lowering it to 19.5, which I'm assuming is, is, we're kind of going back, and we're saying, you know, as of July 1st, our number is now 19.5, how, what does that do for our, our budget and what we've spent so far, and, and all that?
The budget, like, if you go with a 19.5, it's for the whole year.
Right.
So what we've already spent, the balance of that is what we have to spend between now and June 30th. The towns, in essence, have given us more monthly assessments than they should have, but their assessments will be just adjusted for the balance that they owe for the whole year.
To follow up, then, the cuts that we're proposing, and the timeline that we're proposing to make them in, plus with the budget freeze that we've had in place for, it's over a month now, you're confident that we can hit that 19.5 number with those things in place? Because the other bad thing would be overspending, as we know, is frowned upon.
The numbers that are on here for the cuts, for instance, like the staff, it's the balance that is being cut. We took into consideration the portion that was already paid.
And as you run the numbers, we can hit that 19.5?
That's why we have to date a little bit deeper and do supplies and other things.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions? The only question I have is with a 19.5 number, what is the new assessment for Templeton?
Total for Templeton would be $6,682,836.
Okay, so that represents?
From July 1.
From July 1, yeah. So it's about $250,000, $60,000 difference from what our current number is. She's just handing it to me, which is nice, thank you.
Oh.
And I'm just trying to get a magnitude of, of the difference in the towns. So Philipston's is $1,601,834, which goes down about $46,000. So the impact, that's, just to get a magnitude for the towns.
Margaret, is this new number that we're tossing out there, is this with the, I forget what the number was, but with the new cherry sheet?
Mm-hmm.
Are we going to throw that back to the town? Are we going to keep that money, or how are we going to do that? Now, how does that work?
It's kind of an interesting, it's a very good and insightful question, because the number of 19,500,000, that was put out by the Templeton Board of Selectment, assumed that the certified receipts were what we certified them at. So they're looking at their assessment number as part of their overall budget, not necessarily looking at 19.5 for the school, but it was, what does that assessment end up being? So my belief, and if anyone thinks any differently, is that they had already calculated that into the assessment to see what they could afford. And that's how the 19.5 came about.
So meaning that they would get that, that money?
Right.
Brings an interesting thought for Philipston, too. If we were to go with the 19.5, and they voted the money for the override, how does that get, how would that get addressed? If we have too much in Philipston budgeted?
So as, from a municipal standpoint, this is outside of the realm of the school, but from a municipal standpoint, Philipston taxpayers are being taxed on monies that will not be spent, and an override has already been added to the tax levy limit. So Philipston has two choices, they can go for an underwrite next year, and this way, those monies are not available to be taxed on the people. So there's several things that Philipston.
Just curious how that.
Yeah, they would actually have to have a special time meeting, redo the assessment, the allocation to the school, and then have that factor into this year's tax base. So that would actually have to be a town, town meeting.
Interesting.
All right, any other questions or comments? So I have on the floor a motion to, that the Naragansett Regional School District School Committee vote and certify the amount of $19,500,000 for the FY '20 budget. This motion will require a two-thirds vote, which means six out of eight, and it is a roll call vote. Any last minute questions or comments? Seeing none, Mr. Mason?
Aye.
Says aye. Mrs. Mattson?
Yes.
Says yes. Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
Says yes. Mrs. Kojal?
Yes.
Says yes. Mrs. Trifolo?
Yes.
Says yes. Mrs. Chartier?
Yes.
Says yes. Mr. Marks?
No.
Says no. And Mrs. Hughes will be the other symbolic no. The motion does carry with six votes. With that being said, we now need to do our three other certification votes that feed into the 19,500,000. We motion that the Naragansett Regional, accept a motion that the Naragansett Regional School District School Committee vote the estimated income of $10,300,000, is this the right number? Isn't it the $11,215?
That's the, that's the total, that says Chapter 71.
Just Chapter 71, perfect, thank you. $10,394,692 for FY '20, which is based on the Chapter 70 actual income, and estimated Chapter 71,8 for FY '20. I would entertain a motion for that.
So move.
So I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, once again, a roll call, Mr. Mason?
Aye.
Mrs. Mattson?
Yes.
Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
Mrs. Kojal?
Yes.
Mrs. Trifolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chartier?
Yes.
Mr. Marks?
No.
And Mrs. Hughes, I'm going with yes, because with the first vote, it doesn't matter, I know it's, I would now entertain a motion that the Naragansett Regional School District School Committee vote that the assessment to Templeton is in the amount of $6,682,836 for fiscal year '20.
So move.
I have a motion, do I have a second? And I have a second. Questions? Mr. Mason?
Aye.
Mrs. Mattson?
Yes.
Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
Mrs. Kojal?
Yes.
Mrs. Trifolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chartier?
Yes.
Mr. Marks?
No.
And Mrs. Hughes will just say yes. And the last motion we need, I would entertain a motion that the Naragansett Regional School District School Committee vote the assessment to Philipston in the amount of $1,601,834 for fiscal year '20.
So move.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Any questions? Seeing none, Mr. Mason?
Aye.
Mrs. Mattson?
Yes.
Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
Mrs. Kojal?
Yes.
Mrs. Trifolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chartier?
Yes.
Mr. Marks?
No.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes. With that, we have successfully recertified our FY '20 budget to the approved numbers by both towns, and we need to report that back to the state, and then the towns, of course, will need to get them our official letter, I think the treasurer will do that, and alert them as such. And Dr. Kazivan, I'm certain you, first thing, be alerting the state as to our recertification. Thank you. You're welcome. Any questions or comments on FY '20? Because I would also just like to, Mrs. Trifolo had started to allude to FY '21, I did want to have a brief discussion on FY '21 based upon the actions that the school committee just made. So I'll start with any.
We obviously have to change the way we're doing things.
I'm glad it's over.
I'm glad the state's not coming in. I would like to say that I do firmly believe that FY '21 is going to be worse. So we need people to come out and support anything that we do next year, and I don't know if this is the time to start throwing this out there, but I know that in some ways, we've already started working with. but I know that in some ways, we've already started working with another community. I think we need to start looking a little more in depth. I don't know what that means, what that looks like, but we need to start talking to other school districts on how we pool our resources. And I don't know if that means we reach out via letter to, and I say it only because I know that we've had some interactions with Winchonan. Maybe it's time to start really, like really delving into that. And see what that brings us.
Yes, and the state is really encouraging that too, so. And I believe the other piece of that is we are on the list to potentially receive some rural aid. They reclassified the density numbers for populations we had just missed out, and now we, as well as a handful of other communities, are now on the rural aid listing. But if you accept the money, it comes with a caveat that you have to have a plan in three years how you're not going to need that rural aid anymore. So I think to that point, you're spot on. We have to look at the ways, and that is definitely one way that we can certainly look to try and see how we have sharing the resources and how that can potentially save monies for not just this community, but other communities involved.
So how would we begin something like that?
I'm sorry, which part?
That reaching out to other communities and seeing how, I mean, I know you've already begun it in some ways, but to make it a little bit more formal and a little bit more in depth?
I think a letter from the school committee to their school committee, I, you know, simply stating that they would like to explore the possibilities of, you know,
Shared resources.
Sharing resources. This doesn't have to be, you know, hey, let's, you know, let's regionalize everybody.
That could be a step five years down the road, who knows?
So that's my point, is that it's simply just an opportunity to probably meet as a, as a, two boards, honestly, to discuss options, possibilities, whatever. It's a very low, it's a very low risk. It's just a conversation. We're already doing some things, as everyone knows, our band program, thanks to all our band boosters and our March for Music staff, for example. We've done some great, that's me and Marie. Please did some great work up in the business office for some help up there as well. So we have a good relationship, and, you know, so I think that that would come from the school committee.
So I would recommend, we, we've got a workshop on the books that we're planning on December fourth, that that be one of the agenda items that we'll talk about. Shared services, which communities we might want to reach out to, and formalizing that letter so that we can get something sent out and engage in the discussions.
I guess I think, in my head, I think we're just at the point, or I'm at the point, that we've talked, we've talked, we've thrown this out there. Well, we're desperate times, call for desperate measures, and I think we're there.
I think we need to involve the community with any of these invitations, what the pros and cons are prior to anything going on. So they may have more suggestions than, than we have. But, you know, obviously, we can't keep doing the same thing in the same way. So programs have to be looked at. We just have to come up with a way that will least impact kids, but will involve changes.
And I agree with that. And I would also say we sit to Winchonan, Gardner, and Narragansett also have another great relationship. We do a lot of, we do sports co-ops with Gardner, and it's already in place. And so the point is that, yeah, we started with some low, low hanging fruits and very easy, you know, things. But I spoke with Mr. Pellegrino, who's president of Gardner, just two days ago about, for example, you know, educational coaches. These are things that everyone needs, but no one can afford, that kind of thing. Should there be, could there be a conversation between multi-districts to, you know, to do something to that effect? So we do a lot of talking, as, you know, we like to talk, so. But it, there's, the communication are open, is what I'm saying. We are, we are friendly, you know, we are open to conversation. So it could go in any direction, as you said.
Right, but we have to do, we have to, the community, I believe, has to understand that some of these things have to happen immediately. What we're talking about here could be in their opting for a while before we see any financial benefit. So we have to look at what we have, and that would involve meetings with community members prior to hitting a budget.
We need to, you know, we have to decide, what do we do with our two elementary schools? What do they look like? How do we utilize the resources in the best way we can, that's best for our kids, that allows us to fall within a budget number that we know we're going to have to have? It all has to be out there on the table, from the most extreme to the least impactful. We have to have those discussions as hard and as emotional as they may be. It all needs to be laid out there, and we need the community members to come in and talk to us about that because at the end of the day, the almighty dollar rules the roost here. And like it or not, obviously, what we've done tonight just proves the fact that it comes back to who's willing to spend the money and the fact that it's, we don't control any of that. So, you know, what you're not hearing us say directly is configuration changes? Yeah, it's on the table, okay? Looking at making other moves, discontinuing programs, it's all on the table. Everything is on the table. But we don't want to do that in any sort of vacuum. We need to have community input. We need to talk through and decide what the communities are willing to accept within the constraints of the almighty dollar, because that's what it comes down to. So, you know, this is the notice that that will be happening. Part of our workshop is going to be discussing, what could that be? And then we'll figure out how we're going to, the timeframe for engaging those communities, if it's public hearings, if it's informal sessions to start with. But be on the notice, that is going to happen. And whether we end up looking exactly like we do today or something entirely different, those discussions will happen because they need to.
I think we talked earlier tonight, just keeping what we have this year and moving it into next year. What was that percentage increase? It was like eight percent?
Four point four, four point four.
Four point four.
It was like eight hundred thousand dollars.
Eight hundred thousand, exactly. And that's just to keep what we have, and the towns are only going to give us, they say, two and a half percent. So we're behind the eight ball again.
Doesn't make any of us happy, but this is the box we have to work in. Any thoughts before we move on to our next discussion point, which actually is school committee comments? So the first thing on school committee comments, we've already kind of talked a little bit about the joint conference that many of us attended last week, which is the Mass Association of School Committees and Mass Association of School Superintendent Joint Conference. Anyone want to throw out some of the things that they took away from the conference and the benefits of it?
I think, yes, I do. We met with a group talking about the regional agreement. Well, obviously, if things change, we, the agreement has to change. But there's a group from Mars who could facilitate that change, and it would include community members as well as a member or two of the school committee. But we would be the ones that would have to open that up for exploration. So that's something that we have to talk about too, at our workshop in December.
Yep, actually, better put that on the agenda.
I also took away from it after sitting in one of the seminars, thinking how much of a great time this has been for the past few months, that we're not as bad as we think we are, though. Wow, it could be worse. There was, wow. Yeah, to the point, I think Rayanne actually left that little, that little seminar.
I think that, if you're thinking of the same one, it was meaning that this school committee works well together.
Yes, that is what I was trying to say.
It doesn't, it didn't mean that our budget was, was so much better than some of the others. That wasn't the case. What, yeah, I did leave it because, you know, we do have a committee that, you know, works well together, but not all, you know, we work out our disagreements and find ways around them. So that, there were some committees that just aren't so blessed. But, but that did not mean that our budget was any better than it. That was not the case.
I didn't mean the budget, I meant the interaction.
Between the committee, yeah.
Can you imagine bad interaction and bad budget like that would have been?
Right, but we, yes.
And I don't want the teachers or the community to think we've given up on them or the kids. We haven't. But we can only go and do so much, and it's time. I don't want somebody to come in and tell us what we have to do. I don't want somebody to come in and say, okay, we can't negotiate. Let's control our own things. And we will fight for our teachers, and we will fight for our kids, the best that we can with the restraints that they put on us.
I think we just need to stand.
Don't think we sold out.
I'm ready to cry. I think we need to start looking at other ways, and that's why I, you know, with the region, looking at other districts.
You know, our, our community doesn't understand it either. I mean, the community put an override for the police on. They put an override and passed it for the firemen. Within the recent years, yes, school has had overrides. I said it was our turn, and I meant it. But there were too many people in the community that don't understand how good they have it. And we don't mean it's best, it means that we're taking care of the academics of students as best we can, and this is where we wanted to move to the future. But when you look at that town meeting, I mean, they had six more votes than us. We have a K to twelve population, where were the people? Granted, we had almost half. But that means that some people in our district are not understanding what they have and how quickly it can go. So it really, it disheartened me to sit up at that table and take the abuse that the school committee took. And for people to believe that we were pitting public service over what are we, public service with kids? And we're sitting here, we're going to do that, yet, yet they had it. Where are the second and third grade parents and the tenth and eleventh who understand that they needed to come and vote? The town meeting system needs to be understood as part of our work as well, I think. We should have had it. And we didn't. Now, maybe they believed what was said, but the funding was there prior to that for these. It was debt. What do we have? I could go on to what they are doing with the town budget now, what's going into some of their accounts instead of funding this. But the point is still, they don't, again, education has to happen to the community. And when we have this town forums, they'll, they'll, they'll get it.
And you know, townspeople may think adequate's okay, but we as a committee don't think adequate is okay. And we're going to continue to fight for what's best and high achievement.
But we do have a town meeting form of government, and they're not participating.
Anyway.
Anyway, any other school committee comments?
Well, that, that really, I just had to get that off my chest.
I think we all agree with you.
I did feel betrayed by the community and the lack of attention and what they ended up standing up for because they obviously didn't understand where we were. And there were many of them that did.
You know, throughout the whole process too, I just want to say that one of the things that was loud and clear, and I think this committee did a great job fighting, fighting for everything throughout the, throughout the process. But one of the things that was very clear, and it's, I think it's very clear to this committee right now, is whatever it is that we choose to do is we have to do it differently. We have to come up with new ways to figure out how we need to educate the children and to provide them with the services that we feel that they need. So things are going to have to be different. And so we got a long road ahead of us to do that. And I will say that, you know, from the MASCE, there were, you know, we're, we're not the only ones in the boat. There are a lot of people down there. One of the good things about the, about going down to the conference was there were a lot of different ideas that are kicking around down there. Everybody is looking for different ideas on how to do, on how to do things differently. So again, we have a, we have a long road ahead of us, but, you know, we will, we will get it done. We will do it right.
I'm and I were actually invited to be a part of a student panel at the conference that presented on the last day about what student reps are and how they're chosen in different schools. So it was really interesting to present to everybody and hear the comments back from other schools.
We were offered free legal counsel, and someone offered to get us into college. So it was a great experience for us. And everyone laughed at my jokes. So it was a great night.
They were like the rock stars in this presentation. It was, it was pretty funny. And it was an interesting takeaway because every single school committee handles their reps absolutely different. And there's a lot on the books that defines certain things, yet the committees do a lot of things. So it was really a very interesting and eye-opening presentation, so it was, it was good. I just want to add, and thank you too for attending that and representing us. And I hope going forward, because this is every Saturday at the conference, that we can have student participation at this event, and our school is, our district is looked at by having a student voice and allowing them to be at the table and to have, to help us form policy and make decisions. So I'm really hoping that that continues, and MASCE continues the push for student advocacy. I would just like to make a couple of comments and observations through this process. I mean, I'm very disappointed. I'm disappointed with the state. I'm disappointed with ed funding. I'm disappointed with the towns. I'm disappointed with the people who said, we believe that you need every dollar, we're just not giving it to you. From a year ago to, we're going to fight for every dollar you need. And that fight lasted about thirty-two seconds on a town meeting floor and then was forgotten. So I'm very disappointed with a whole host of people about a whole bunch of different things. But at the end of the day, these are the people we have to work with and we have to partner with because the goal in these communities is we have, we're a two-town district, and we have a municipal school district that represents those two towns. And we succeed together or we fail together. And it's our job to make sure that we succeed. And however we need to do that, we have to do it. We have to work within the bounds that we're given. We may not be happy about it, but these are our partners. You know, we have a regional agreement that we have to manage to. I think as we've spoken, we got to look at that and see what does that mean moving forward. I'm not happy, as I said, I'm disappointed in a lot of different players and a lot of different roles. I have an air of optimism, though, that perhaps some, some ed funding changes are coming about with the Student Opportunity Act. Unfortunately, it may be five years before we see anything, but there may be some relief in sight. And I don't know what that does to our municipalities either, our two towns, because that could have some negative impact on them. So there's a whole host of things that concern me with what could happen for the school to the good is going to impact the taxpayers in the town. Because you bet every dollar that they want to increase in funding, guess who's going to pay for it? If we're not paying it in income tax, we're paying for it in property tax. So at the end of the day, we, the taxpayers, are funding the whole nut. So it's, it's, it's great that the state is recognizing the fact that education is underfunded, but when you put your taxpayer hat on, it's, it's a little daunting to think about what could ultimately happen. So I think that's about all I have to say. Mrs. Matson?
One thing that I've been thinking about is something that was discussed a little while ago that we were asked if we could work together with the select boards. And we do so well with our negotiating, teaming with our, our two unions in, it's called interest-based bargaining, and it works very, very well. We have a very trusting relationship with our teachers' union and with the UFCW, and I've been a part of that. And I enjoy that interaction with those unions. I've been on both, both, both negotiating party teams. But it was brought up that could we do that in this budget cycle, this one that we were just in?
Just a moment.
And I, I, as much as I think that would have been a great idea, it, it came too late, I think. And I think it would have been a great idea at the beginning when this all started like last year at this time. But when it was presented, I think maybe in September, that we do this, there was so much bad blood and, like you said, there was hurt feelings and, and I would think that that would have been something that could have really helped this process. And I still think it could help that process, but I don't think I could do that going forward, even for next year, even though I feel that it's, it's a process that works and it's, there's no trust and there's no friendly. it's a, it's a process that works and it's, there's no trust and there's no friendly, uh, I, I don't think I could sit next, you know, across the table from my own town select board without wanting to strangle them. And I know I've said other things that I shouldn't say at these meetings, but I seriously feel that way. And, um, it's, um, it's really sad because this year's budget process has put such a bad taste in my mouth that I was elected this year for three years and I seriously don't think that I could possibly go on for three more years.
It'll only be two more years.
It will. I, I seriously considering, uh, resigning.
I, I think, um, many of us feel the same frustration. And, and it's unfortunate to hear that this may impact your ability to consider staying on the committee, but you have to do what's right for you. Um, I, I do want to let, just because you've mentioned, um, let the public know that we have taken some steps to engage and have discussions. We have a, um, maybe it'll be quarterly every other month. We just started, um, with the chair of the, the two chairs of the select boards, the chair of the school committee, the superintendent and the two town administrators getting together just to engage in conversation and open up lines of communication. And we'll see if that begins some trust building, um, within the three organizations. We do, as everyone knows, we do host two meetings with both boards of selectmen. We just had ours at the end of October and where we asked Roger Hatch, who is Desi Financial Person, um, is he officially retired? Or he's trying to retire. He's, yeah, I think he's officially retired, but yeah, um, he's still, so we try to engage them that way and, and hopefully those bridges can be rebuilt. Because as I said, you know, these are the players that we have and we've got to do what we can, um, to do that. So, but thank you for sharing. Any other comments before we move on to our agenda? Um, we do have a surplus item. Is there anything new this month that you would know? Okay, so there are no surplus items. We will pass over that. Just a plug on, is it Saturday? Baldenville Elementary? This is the last hurrah. If anybody wants anything, including, you know, the, the door friends, I don't know what else we're trying to get rid of in there. Also, I do know that they're for students looking for some opportunities, um, for hours, community service. I think some of the athletic teams, um, including the winter sports were, um, potentially looking to get some students to help. So I know I did see an email come out. Um, so if any student is out there that is looking, um, they can contact their coaches or maybe Mrs. Vassal in the, in the high school. Um, could be a point of contact to say, how do I get involved? And that's Saturday?
Eight AM.
Eight AM.
Do you think the students are sitting here listening to our meetings? Or, or on YouTube tomorrow even? No, don't even go there.
We have some parents here.
We have our reps. Yeah, you got it. You got it. I just wanted to make sure you weren't dreaming.
The next item is other items not reasonably anticipated. We had a field trip request come in that will take place prior to our next meeting in December, which is why it got attached under this 48-hour before the meeting, um, item. It was for Mr. Donna Freo. It's part of the outdoor education, uh, program. They are going to, was it Mount Monadnock? Do I remember that correctly? Because I didn't power up. Um, and he's taking a group of students. Um, I hope everybody had a chance to look at it. I would entertain a motion to approve the field trip as presented. I do have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Um, any questions or comments on the field trip? I would just say, let's remind Mr. Donna Freo to take lots of pictures so he can bring them back to us. Okay, so I have a motion and I have a second. Seeing no other discussion, all in favor? I opposed abstain. So that does pass unanimously. Tell those kids to have a great time. Next up, superintendent report, Dr. Kazvant.
Well, uh, so generally what we've, I'm going to combine a few of these, um, online. That the enrollment numbers, we keep talking about, you know, numbers, enrollment numbers, student numbers, foundation. The October one enrollment number, um, is generated by SIMS. They are students that, um, they are resident students, um, who are educated within the district. And this number is used, um, you know, you know, every budget season, right? So, uh, we, we had a, uh, we had a rough number or a preliminary number because once we submit um, the report, uh, the state says thank you and they verify, I believe it's called the, um, everybody's information goes into one spot and you're basically checking on, you know, any duplicates. You know, if I have a kid, we guard her as a kid and we have to, we have to, we have to figure that out, that type of thing. So that has been done. And so the number, the, I'm trying to pull it down. I know that you have it, uh, but the number that you see, sorry, for some reason it's just not moving, but the 1480, the district and Phillipsden totals, the district resident of 1, 2, 3, 4, 1,234 students is verified through, through the state. So I do, 1,050 for district, uh, for Templeton and 184 Phillipsden. It, um, it, you know, and when you faculty, when you round up, it's, it's an 85-15 split. In terms of when you're looking at just the residents. All told, we don't talk really about the district choice at this point in time. That is very preliminary. We'll get our report in December uh, for the preliminary. And, but right now, we've, we've, uh, we have it pegged at 249 for a district total of 1,483 students. Put that in perspective, uh, just, just real quick, I'm talking about total, total students. Give or take, we are roughly 50, uh, students, uh, plus year over year, I'm going to get that right now for you. So by that I mean that we are 52. It's very slow right now. Uh, we're plus 53 residents and we are, we are down one school choice student as of October 1, when compared to last year. So that of course takes into account all the kids who left, graduation, et cetera, et cetera. So when the dust settles, we are plus 53 residents. We've kept this report for the last three years since I've been here. Keep kind of month over month averaging and we have never, we have never been plus 53. So in other words, we haven't been, we have not had this, um, this high of an increase. So yeah, yes, uh, these are residents now, just to summarize.
So these numbers, when they do our chapter 74 next year, is this the October 1 or is it still a year behind?
No, it's, so that's the foundation.
It's a foundation enrollment.
Which is all school age students who live in Templeton and Phillipsden, uh, go to public school, uh, whether it be here or elsewhere. Um, and yes, it is, it is, um, two years in the regular. We're talking FY 20. They use FY 18, October 1, um, numbers. Because it's the only FY that is in the can, so to speak, when you do your end of year report. It's the, it's the only one that hasn't, doesn't need adjustments or et cetera. So
And I know we're not talking, but I just, just from a, this is great. We're seeing these numbers increase. Unfortunately, the lag of using them to help in the foundation budget, um, will still maybe take another year before
Yes.
we start seeing some of that.
So, you know, that, um, you know, we have a lot to talk about, obviously moving forward. So I, again, that seems to be the, you know, that was, that's a big number for us to, to, of course, solidify. We've done that. We now have that. You know, we now have that to use as we move forward in the budget process, et cetera. I'm trying to think what else for my, my report. I mean, almost between the students and everyone else, we've, we've only really talked about budget the last, since we last met, quite frankly, and have worked on FY 20. So we really don't have all that much to report out in terms of the, um, report.
Just the other two items that were here just laid out was the annual report for the towns, which are due, are due by?
I touched base with Holly Young, it's something today, and February 26 is their deadline. We usually follow that same deadline for Phillipsden.
Perfect. So we'll see something in then probably two months from now?
Yeah.
And then the Templeton Elementary School building leases. Has there been any update on that? I know that we, we passed it off and handed our revisions back.
We did. So we, uh, we sent off the revision, um, and, you know, quite frankly, others speaking with, um, you know, Mr. Terrence, you mean, they, they're, they're getting ready for their, um, special town meeting, which is of course next week, next Wednesday. So I think that their focus has been on that and some other things, but they, they have it obviously, and they are probably doing what it's done is they're giving it to their council, um, to review, et cetera. And, you know, we go back and forth.
Do we want to skip over? We have the John and Abigail Adams', um, scholarship recipients that were, uh, named an award and I think there was a recognition luncheon that was held. And, uh, do we want to do that? And then we'll go back to your goals and objectives, um, update.
Yeah, so just real quick, um, the John, um, this, this is a very, you know, it's a great award. I think that, um, the John Abigail Adams Scholarship, um, sometimes gets kind of left, you know, um, you know, in the dust. But it's a merit-based program that provides credit for its tuition. Up to eight semesters of undergraduate education in Massachusetts State College or University. The scholarship merit is based upon student scores and 10th grade MCAS. And, and so it, uh, we had, and I'm trying to find our list of actual students. Oh, is it right there? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Right. Thank you. So I, you see that carry on. So I was very lucky enough to be invited, um, to this. They had a nice little luncheon and what was really neat in the list of students are, are on the bottom. Um, and they, uh, they listed all of the colleges that they've, um, applied to in what their, maybe what their favorite college or what their, what their hope colleges in this. And that was very, um, illuminating. Um, it was actually fairly funny when you hear that some people have applied to 16 different colleges. Um, I think one person said, I just want to go west, I think, I believe. So, um, you know, but it was, what, what I took away from that is that, you know, as, um, as Ms. Vassal said, that this is money. She held up the award and this letter and said to the students, this is money. This is actual money that you're holding in your hand. You will want, don't lose it. But, uh, but that, that, this is important. And we talked about the fact that now this is the beginning, uh, these students are now getting to, because they're, they're, they're leaving the womb of being a student to becoming a, you know, a well, well hope. Um, and much of life is merit-based, right? Much of life is merit-based. So when you work real hard and academics are your thing and you're doing really well, guess what? There's a reward for that. Okay? And so we had a great conversation. I didn't get any pizza. They didn't save me any. Um, we'll talk about that later. But what, what is important is that we had quite a few students that I didn't know, think the moment's just to count and waste time, but that room was full and if somebody wants to just do a quick count, it was a really great opportunity. I'm always a happy one to be invited to that because, uh, it's, it's just a great thing. It's, and it's what we're a school. That's what we do. We teach, right? We learn.
I have a question. On last year's MCAS for the 10th grade, wasn't there a controversial ELA written?
Yep, and they subtracted it out.
And they subtracted it out. I wondered if any adjustment was made.
Whatever they did, they accounted for it. I, I don't, the math of it has never been fully disclosed, but they, they, they took it out of the, they took it out of the, um, they didn't count it or however you want to put it, but it didn't. If you got it wrong, it didn't count against you. If they got it right, that's where people started to get a little bit, the questions came to this. If I got it right, I should have, but they, they know, I believe in mathematics.
Thank you.
You're very good.
I just did a quick count there. Arch 24. Um, do you want to read their names? I just think it'd be great to, that's all right. We'll grade you on the pronunciation.
So, uh, may I, yeah? Do you want me to say that? Yeah, would you? Oh, my gosh. I don't know the last names.
High school principal. Yes, and how about Mrs. Vassal?
Oh, Ms. Vassal. Of my, go ahead.
Okay.
Well, that's more appropriate.
More appropriate of the, uh, I think.
The high school principal did it.
So Sydney Chenoweth, uh, Michael Cote, Sarah DeJoy, Patrick Brew, Josh Garrity, Karen Page, Kayla Hickey, Emma Hughes, Alex Brenney, uh, Alexander LaJoy, Marina Lewindy, Mary Lewindy, Madison Laporte?
Laputre.
Laputre, sorry. Kristen Lloyd, Colin Mahoney, Hyther Marion, Arielle Nicholson, thank you, Andrew Parker, Bryce Parker, Gabriel Rineary, Lillian Richards, Trevor Williams, Jake Wilson, and Erin Witz. And it was a wonderful time and I, um, and again, it's, it's always good to celebrate, you know, academic achievement. So.
Thank you. Thank you. The last thing that we had for you was, well, not the last thing, because we have plenty of things for you, but in this particular section, um, was an update on your goals, strategic objectives and initiatives because we need to be planning in December for our interim evaluation.
Sure.
So we ask for just an update of where you are so that when we get to that point, we'll have some.
So you should have, I'm hoping in your packet, the River 2019 update on superintendent and chief academic officer goals, strategic objectives, initiatives. So just as a quick, it looks like this. The date is in red. You should have it in your packet. So, uh, as we discussed back, probably early, late spring, early summer, um, that we aligned our goals and objectives to the strategic plan. Because obviously we, in general, we're kind of caffeinating, um, that endeavor. And so, you, as you move through this, okay, so when you turn the page and you see our first, first strategic objective, which is culture shift to a learner-centered culture to maintain what's most important to each student. I also want to make sure I point out, these are two-year goals. These are two-year goals. I just, I want to, you know, make sure we frame this correctly, but. So, again, the initiative was to offer professional development organized around the theme of learner-centered culture. And to your right, uh, the actions and in red is what, um, we, um, have accomplished, um, to date. So, and I don't believe that anyone wants me to read every single one of these. I'm going, I will gladly, because I mastered the names.
Just as a quick question, the underlined, is that a hot link in the actual document?
It is.
You'll take us right to the documentation.
So, uh, thank you very much. I forgot to add that. The, you know, again, you know, I'm thinking about the student leadership training piece. We just talked about student leadership. You know, we're talking about how to, you know, employ the strategy to ensure that principals and chief academic officer offer growth, organize professional development, example PD. And you see these examples and again, the hot links will, will take you to documents that support that. Again, I think one of our bigger, uh, bigger feathers in our cap, so to speak, for his district is these, uh, teacher leaders. You know, Kate is, uh, Ms. Kalise is a very excited person. Um, but when she comes running into my office goes, you know what? Teacher leaders are going to make a difference at the middle school. I, I'm telling you right now. And then she just runs out of my office. Um, and I go.
I mean, it wasn't exactly.
Yes, it was exactly, it was exactly like that. Um, but you know, what we're doing is obviously is, um, you know, we're creating leadership, um, opportunities throughout our, our teacher corps, um, et cetera. And, um, we're better to lead the way than our educators, for example. So, again, I know that you've had some time to review the document. I don't want to speak about anything specific. You know, just in general or?
I think for me, the question I have is we've just newly certified budget. You've got cuts. What does that do to your ability to achieve any of these goals? Do we have to shift, um, any of, and again, I know this is, you know, you've had about 32 minutes to think about this. So if you could quick give us, you know, what you're exactly what you're going to do, that'd be great. But I would ask that maybe you go back and think through these objectives and the actions and what needs to get adjusted or realigned based upon the cuts that we are going to be looking at. Um, also potential, you know, if this is a two-year process, what does that mean for next year as well? Um, and then maybe next month, if we could come back and discuss this a little more with that in mind? Because, um, again, we need to give you a lot of notice.
Well, what I would tell you is that we know right off the bat that strategic objective number two, um, which is the MTSS, system, you know, tiered systems of support for academic behavior improvement. Right off the bat, and this came, the first round of cuts, was the, uh, you know, the school psych, um, the intense was the, you know, the school psych, the intense special needs teacher at the elementary level, again, I'm trying to honestly recall from memory, those were vital positions that played pretty heavy in implementing the plan. We've created some workarounds, we've made some adjustments, but you're right, so right off the bat, you know, we didn't, you know, there's.
Can we move this to our workshop on December fourth, is it? Can we have this part, documented part of that special, and then we can report back at committee? Because there is some strong implication here. I mean, that's your first position, but there are others.
I think we need to have a totally separate workshop, it's only a two-hour workshop, and we're looking at finances.
So why don't?
This is, this also ties to that.
So why don't we do, why don't we go ahead, we can put it on the agenda for that meeting? If time does not permit us to get to this, we can schedule a follow-up, if, for, by some chance, we do have some time to delve into this, or as we can delve into it as it relates to our other discussions, but at least we'll put it on there, and it'll be.
I think the same would be true of the strategic plan.
I was just, I was just going to get to the point, because the strategic plan at all, now everything ties into.
That's correct.
Everything, so we have, you know, SIPs in the district, and school improvement.
Those will have to be adjusted.
They, they'll, well, what we want to do is talk about that, because maybe they've not adjusted, maybe something else.
Correct.
Goes.
But there's adjustment to be had.
Yeah, there'll be adjustment to be made, not necessarily to the strategic or district improvement plan, it might be to something else, because this is what we value, remember, this is.
I understand, but, but you're, you're looking at student outcomes, those may differ. Based on that, too.
Sure.
So that's why I said that has to be looked at, yeah.
Um, so let's, that's. I would, what I would like to hear, though, is from Ms. Kalise, just, what are our wins so far? I don't want to gloss over the fact that just because we've had to make some budget adjustments, that we haven't seen significant impact in areas that have been focused on for the past, probably, two years now. How long have you been, is it two years?
In your, in your.
So, yeah, so I know we've been working on so many great things, and I don't want to lose sight of the fact that things may be adjusted, but, you know, where, what are our wins? How are we doing when we have a vision and what we value?
I think having the district strategic plan lined up with the school improvement plans lined up with our goals, lined up with our admin goals, is a win in itself. Having that vision and proof line of all of our work this year, I would say that the vast majority of our professional development has really come as a result of the focus that we have on what's in our plans. So, social-emotional learning and academics, the connection that that makes, empowering students to, to have more of a learner-centered culture, that all of that is connected because we've developed this vision through that process of the strategic improvement plan, as in carry a quote from the district, through the district and school improvement plan, so I think that's a huge win. Personally, I think another big win is having teacher leaders at really K to A, in particular right now, I'm really feeling it as, as I was teased about.
Native development.
Because we have always had, you know, quote-unquote, department heads at the high school who have kept their eyes on the content, and at middle school, because it's a different model, we don't want it to be a junior high, we want it to be a middle school, they've had teacher representation at each grade level, but now we have teacher leaders that are looking at content. So we've had, for example, excellent conversations then with the middle school and high school teacher leader for English, and really looking for coherence in what we're offering from six to twelve, and how are we building the skills that kids need to achieve, what they need to achieve in high school, just rich conversations that we wouldn't be able to have without that piece there, and even down into elementary. So we have a focus on writing, a focus on student improvement in ELA that really is K through J. So I think that's, that's very exciting. I think it's also exciting, and costs us money, for us to have the right pieces in place to be able to get the data we need. So, you know, we brought on Renaissance, which is Star Reading and Star Math. I was showing Dr. Casanova this graph today that I had created, and we can get into another day, but we now can put our fingers on what percentage of students at the beginning of the year are reading at grade level. We couldn't really capture that data before, we didn't have the mechanism for it. That's so important, and we can look at those students and see that are not performing at grade level, and where are their references, and how can we work on that. So we need the tools to do the work, and that's a tool that I think has been, you know, well worth a little bit of financial investment if you're planning to it. So I think teacher leaders are a big win, I think the data, that everyone is doing, but having the right data is another big win, and that's reflected in one of the areas here, one of our strategic objectives. So, you know, MCAS data is a snapshot, we put a lot of focus on MCAS data, but it's one day, or a couple days in the life of a student, it's not full picture, so we need to have those other data sources that can help us know what to do for our students. So I think all through, you know, K to twelve, we've had a good shift to the, to looking at data for the specific components, not just the whole state. I think we've built a very strong, Dr. Casanova mentioned MTSS, the intervention system, we've built a very strong intervention system, both for academics and the daycare, and that's an area that we need to invest in. So that's, those are the kinds of things that I think are unrecognized cuts or deficits, because really, we should be shifting to more certified teachers providing the services to those students who need intervention, in addition to the parent professionals that we have, we're doing a tremendous job, but that's not something we need to put on the table. So there are implications, we can, like a iceberg, right, under the water for the budget, but I think we've done some, you know, you can see, as Dr. Casanova said, I won't read all of the comments, but I can put everything in yellow, I mean, excuse me, in red, that were things that have happened in that area, and I coded those ones, read if I felt like anywhere, not that it happened immediately, but we're, we're on track, being somewhere we should be at that moment in here for that initiative.
Yes, yes, thank you for the update on that, and, again, we'll add it to that agenda for the workshop, to discuss if time permitting, obviously, there's implications financially, as you mentioned, so we look forward to hearing more on that. Anybody have any questions for Ms. Kalise or Dr. Casanova on what we've presented so far?
Also, by the way, my link, so that when that gets attached, it's my fault, because I really was working on it until the last minute, so Susan, this is why I'm going to add that link to your agenda, and then you'll be able to read it.
Great.
The evidence.
Thank you. Subcommittee reports, academic administrative, we have no update, this month, we meet again in a couple of weeks. Finance, we've reported out on finance. Facilities, this would be our, our district facilities, have we met yet? Okay. Wellness policy update.
Yes, I'd like to bring the wellness policy forward, I would like to forego a second reading and just vote on this policy. We did make a couple changes, and it was during the school day about the nutrition, and what's being served, and what's in the machines, and all of that kind of stuff.
It was illegal, our, our policy didn't reflect what the law said, so we needed to bring it into compliance from a legal perspective, so this was the tweak that was needed to do that, right?
But Desi's looking for, looking to have this, so we need to move it along if we could, so as long as no one minds.
So let's, let's take a motion to suspend our policy on the policy implementation process, so we can do that?
So.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so, any questions on, on the suspension of our normal policy? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, or abstained? So it's unanimous that we will go ahead and waive our normal process and be allowed to go straight to an approval?
So I make a motion that we approve the wellness policy with changes made.
Second.
So a motion and a second on the floor, any comments on that?
Has that been approved through, the schools have? Yes.
Yes, we have a wellness committee.
Okay, thank you. Kate actually presented it to us, the policy. So, no, I meant the, the school people have. Yes, yes, the wellness committee, yes, you represented that. And then that went out to teachers, and.
Well, not until.
Not until we get a policy.
Yeah. Okay. Usually they see it, so if they have the comments, but they can't because.
Representation.
On the thing, okay.
Yes, absolutely.
Any other questions? Hearing on, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so that was unanimous. So that is now our official wellness policy, that can be published and distributed to the appropriate parties that are interested up at the state level, and I will ask that maybe the wellness committee distribute that, or put word out that it has been approved through whatever channels you usually use, if it's cool, that would be awesome.
Who monitors that?
There's, there's actually a law around how many times the wellness policy committee has to meet, they have to meet four times a year.
No, but I meant, who, who like monitors? The machines, that they have the right things in there and everything? I mean, I know there's not wellness police, but, I mean, when we were in school, there were candy bars floating all the time, I mean.
You know.
It's changed, Mrs. Triff. All right, good.
I don't know, and I, and I guess that is a good question, in the policy itself, and even the model policies, they don't speak to the actual.
Oh, they don't, okay.
The, the, the person that goes around that grabs all the candy bars. So I guess we self-police, people are made aware, but that is, that is probably something we need to look at, as to, you know, who's, who's making sure, I'm sure probably our food services director, he knows his partner, so, because that all ties into.
Okay, as long as there's some attention to it.
Long-term planning, we had a quick meeting yesterday.
Yeah, I also wanted to point out, I think it was last month, that we had stated that after this budget, the last, well, this year's budget, last year's budget, whatever budget we just ended, is done, we were going to open up the regional agreement to look at that, so I know you had made a note that we were going to talk about that, and I'm not quite sure in long-term, I know we talked about it in long-term planning, but I don't know if that's the area that we need to, because we do have a, a subcommittee for long, for a regional agreement.
Well, the, I'm just going to share with you only because I know someone mentioned the session that we attended.
I did, yes.
And one of the things, if we do engage a, an outside consultant, they form the RAC, the Regional Agreement.
Advisory Committee.
Advisory Committee, I couldn't leave the second A. So there is a, a whole formal process that will happen, that, that it won't reside in long-term planning, it'll be a separate beast on its own.
Three people are going to decide on changes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And it's got to involve both communities and stuff.
So, yes.
But I know that was something that we had talked about with long-term planning, and I know we just met yesterday, but I, it just went right over my head.
I think everything we've been saying, I think everything we've said here tonight.
Yeah, I don't remember what happened yesterday, so, nothing to report.
Templeton Elementary School Building Committee, I know we're, we're running, we look good, anything going on with TES that we need to know?
Everything's fine. It's camp tranquility.
Awesome. All right, and last is the PMES Building Committee, I think you guys met last night?
Yes.
And anything to report out of that?
They just restarted the meetings again, there was a lot of discussion going on, a lot of it was just reviewing the old notes, we will have another discussion, that there is not a member of the school committee on that, on that board, it was officially talked about last night. They do have some designers, they're reaching out to some designers, to have some designers come in, to look at some of the projects that were, were invested, to get some estimated construction cuts and things like that. I will say that the, let me see, over the summer, the carpeting, I forget how many rooms were done, it was four rooms, the air handling units or the rooftop units were, I think it was five out of seven, I don't have my notes right in front of me, yeah, five of the seven were just finished up, they're up, they're, they're running good, and like I said, there's a list of projects that they're reviewing right now, okay?
So hopefully, maybe at our next meeting, we'll have a better update, as to what they're doing, I mean, I, I, I start to get worried, because without a project manager to coordinate all of this, it'll be hard for that group to come back with an estimate, and we're relying on the town of Phillipston to fund all of, you know, because it's a capital expense, I get concerned, because at some point, this has to go from a let's talk about it to.
Let's do.
Let's do it.
Yep.
And that's kind of where we are, because it has implications from a facility standpoint as to what this committee may.
Yep.
May need to do, never mind, we might have to, but we may need to do, so, thank you.
Can some of those discussions come up, we, some of those discussions come up last night as well?
I will reach out once again to the chair of the select board and remind them that they're supposed to be appointing yourself as that member, I know there was a reason for a delay in it, but there shouldn't be a reason anymore, so I will do that as, from chair here to chair there, so. Correspondence, there was a piece of correspondence that we received from the Board of Select from Templeton, everyone should have received that, so we thank them for their correspondence, and that is, is out there. Our next meeting, aside from the workshop, which is December fourth at four P M., is December eleventh, we meet at six o'clock here in the Kiva, and we'll meet an hour beforehand for our finance subcommittee meeting, so that'll be at five o'clock on the eleventh, turning into the six o'clock meeting for the regular school committee. We do have executive session this evening, so we need to enter into executive, executive, thank you, session for reason number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, which I am declaring, and this meeting will not return into open session immediately following, for clarity's sake, this is discussions with our two unions. I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session and not return back to open session.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second, Mr. Mason.
Aye.
Ms. Mattson.
If we have to.
Mrs. Triff.
Yes.
Mrs. Kozel.
Yes.
Mrs. Triffel.
Yes.
Mrs. Chartier.
Yes.
Mr. Marks, and Mrs. Hughes says yes, we will be entering into executive session. I thank everyone for coming, and have a wonderful evening, thank you.